Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting for the Town of Tustin Town Board for November the 12th. Call the meeting to order. Our payment bills generally expended eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. Highway sixty-three thousand, sixty dollars and ninety cents. Water forty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-four cents. Sewer fifty thousand, ninety-three dollars and forty-three cents. The lighting district one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. Capital water eighteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. For grand total two hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Bruce and Greg forwarded the bills. Any questions, discrepancies? Needs to.
Everything looks good.
A motion to pay the bills as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second further discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Our division reports, those that are not read here, they will be available online.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Better division, since we have Peg, Peg here. Um, Peg, I don't understand what star markers for those receiving the star. What does that mean? This.
On the, on our system, anybody that gets star checked, those who are tax medic, they have the nine-nine-nine marker on their system, and I just have to remove it. Or the county bill, they don't remove it on. So it's, it's published, it's not only, it's, it's all over on the.
So that's not enhanced star, that's regular star?
That is regular star, for anybody who can get his one started. And then I have to put it back on again.
Alright, thank you.
The water and sewer committee report. Senator McDonough is at another meeting, will be here. Uh, the income survey letter is being prepared, the discussion of the water. Sewer bills and payments being lost or delayed in the mail. Uh, water sewer working with Delaware Engineering on insurance claim related to well number three. New details have emerged since committee meeting. Uh, the chair put Delaware Engineering in touch with Assemblywoman Gunther's office to hopefully clear up the delays in the water project. Uh, Delaware Engineering's Joe Gold has assured us that now the project is broken into stages, that a bid will go out on the water tower project. Uh, some discussion on project delays, rising costs and frustrations. Well, two Craig reports of the mechanical issues have been completed. And if the testing the well, sending the results to the lab and DOH for approval are the only hurdles putting well tubes back online. Which they find is good news, given the issue for well number three. Dave Buns expressed some concerns about the fact that well two has been inactive for several years. The Kirk Road generator is out for repairs. Uh, since that meeting, it has been reported that it has been repaired. Uh, talk of the Kirk Road generator replacement, including discussion of the need for the town attorney to assist. He's been from property owners on Kirk Road. And the sewer pipe repair at ninety-three Main Street Brewery insized some responsibility for the water and sewer department and four hundred and fifty-dollar bill from the brewery owners.
Can I just add to that for the general public's knowledge that income survey is very important for those that are in the um, water sewer district, please fill it out. We're um, trying to see if we become eligible for other grants that are available, but many of them are based on income levels, so it is important.
They what? They did go out.
They did go out. Okay, so please take care of that. Thank you.
Uh, Peggy, you have anything more on your assessor's report, or we're good on that? Uh, Tustin Youth Commission.
Tustin Youth has been awarded since the last meeting a five thousand dollar grant for the Tustin Youth Club. If you're not familiar with the youth club, we run most Wednesdays after school. Provides opportunities for the children. Uh, we have different activities every week. We are currently looking for volunteers, if anyone is interested or knows someone who may be interested. Um, the club is growing and our volunteer base needs to grow along with that, so you can reach out to myself or Crystal at the town hall. Um, that's a great program. It's expanding very successfully. The holiday magic in Narisburg is coming back. Uh, we are working with the Chamber of Commerce on December seventh. We'll be on Main Street. Um, like I said, working with the chamber, we have the tree lighting on the deck, hot food and beverages. Four strong carriages um, are coming back again. Santa will have holiday characters, um, you know, the Grinch and some man, Frosty, things like that. The program will run from four to seven-thirty right here on Main Street. Um, the plastic recycling program, which we've talked about often throughout the years. Uh, Tustin Youth has now begun, we're working with Jill to completely take the program over here in town. Um, we'd like to see it keep going. Um, we are incorporating it into our Wednesday club, teaching the kids about recycling, so it's kind of a win-win for everybody. Um, collection bins are currently at Pete's Market, the town hall, and at the post office. Since we have taken over, we have submitted a hundred and forty-six pounds.
Any questions from the board?
Who was the five thousand?
From the county, state we have. So we're, we're putting in throughout the year several different brands that are new to Crystal and I doing over the last few years, but we realize we focus more on specific programming. There's funds out there to be had for a specific program.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm gonna circle back to the water and sewer committee and dish. Chair.
No, I heard it was read by AI, huh? No, I mean, if you've read the report, it's all there, just headlines anyway. I mean, the most exciting thing or interesting thing of many is well two. That's a, that's a great development, and the income survey's gone out. I got mine today, so. And again, it's not an intrusive thing, it's, you can fill it out and help us know, help us lower um our income level for the appropriate authorities that might help us get some more grants and such. It's a long process. Um, and if you have any questions, you know, don't hesitate to ask. But we're not, this figures that you submit are going to RCAP in Fonda, New York, wherever that is. I think near O'Neance. No one here is gonna see it. We're not snooping in on your business.
Okay, well.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I think that's where Jesse moved in. Okay, that's, that's it. Those are the headlines.
Uh, Parks and Public Spaces?
Um, had a very productive meeting. Uh, several initiatives are moving forward. A lot of things will be followed up on in the spring, so that they don't have to go through the winter wear and tear. Uh, the most public facing thing is there has been a request from people in the community to consider new playground equipment as part of maybe a twenty-twenty-six initiative in the park. So we are asking if people have suggestions to just send me a link to whatever playground equipment you think kids might especially enjoy. So that we can compile that information. Otherwise, everything else is outlined in the report. Thank you.
Anything from the board? CAC?
Oh, that's me. Um, CAC committee met via Zoom with NJ Engineering on October seventeenth. We discussed some of the survey results, but they weren't totally tabulated at that time. So the can, uh, community visioning survey results will be tabulated by NJ Engineering. Thank you all for who, those who participated. And the next public meeting is December fourth at six-thirty PM. And um, the first one was very informative and most people that attended really enjoyed it, so we would love to see you on December fourth at six-thirty. You had that right? Okay, that's it.
Uh, and into branch?
Uh, water infrastructure project is um, Kevin reported and his reporter continues. The UGC, uh, we continue to work on the open space and wreck. And National Fish and Wildlife continues. Sullivan one-eighty is looking for closure on our community development grant, so I need to submit a final report by December fifteenth, and I will do that.
Any questions, Peggy? Moving into old business, uh, three point one is the twenty-twenty-five budget. Um, I will take a couple of questions if they are on the floor or on Zoom regarding the budget for those that did not attend the public hearing. Um, if there are any questions, I will entertain them before we move forward. A motion to adopt the twenty-twenty-five preliminary budget as presented. So move. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have further discussions on the board? None? All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Uh, three point two, our HVAC quotes. We have an issue that, uh, Vesselli Solutions, uh, have an inability to provide the system. Therefore, the second, uh, in line with the proposal was Olson Mechanical. And it had a sixteen thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars as a second lowest quote received. But we need to do a motion to rescind it and then motion for. So I would make a motion to rescind resolution one-ten-dash-twenty-four awarding Vesselli Solutions at town hall HVAC due to the inability to provide the system as proposed.
I'll, I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
I.
I oppose. A motion to award Olson Mechanical the amount of sixteen thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars as a second lowest quote received.
Before we vote on that, it's the same unit?
Yes, that's, that was what the issue was. Um. Look, the quote from Vesselli was, they were unable to get that unit. Uh, Olson has confirmed that they are able to get the unit that they voted for.
One was Fujitsu and one was Mitsubishi.
Yeah.
You get one.
Yeah.
I, we did call Olson and before we, we called and said, you didn't have it, you aren't able to get it. Exactly.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, a motion to award to Olson Mechanical?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Uh, well, three point three, well number three, Delaware Engineering Agreement Contract. I don't believe they sent this to you, Ken also.
It's a standard.
And this was the one, I believe, that he had discussed. For professional services for well number three replacement. Um, as a follow-up to our October thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four meeting, we're prepared and provided this contract to assist the town with issues relating to work for replacement of well number three, uh, for the Narisburg Water District. This is also to collect review data and prepare and submit documents to New York State Department of Health, the USDA, RD, and representatives of the town's insurance provider on the town's behalf. Uh, they've set a contract of expenses based on a thirty thousand dollar budget, uh, which could be increased by amendment if required to address the work. Discussion on.
So this is, a lot of this is to cover work already done.
That is correct. They get to the point with the insurance company.
Because in our last conversation, our last email from them is that they're gonna sort of slow this down until we make a further.
My conversations with, uh, Dave yesterday was based on the information that's been gathered so far, then they are going to hold off until we get a determination from the insurance company and what the town wants to do to move forward with it based on that information from the insurance company.
And a little, you know, whatever. Right, when he never falls in the air. Pipes in the ground, metaphor.
So they're, they're holding off doing their, their um, engineering report for well number three. Does that have to be replaced or just repaired?
Replaced.
Yeah.
I would make a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign a professional service contract for well number three replacement.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Any questions? All right, say. Any other old business that we have missed or not put on? New business. Uh, four point one, authorize a code of course from building department personnel to go for additional annual training in March of twenty-twenty-five in Lake Placid, New York. This is the same training or the same place they went for training last year or this current year. Um, they're looking to continue their training for next year.
All in the budget, right?
It is in the budget.
So I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Uh, four point two, the sewer easement. Um. So our generator went down. And we were able to get it fixed. Well, we were at the point where we believed that we need to engage with the property owners for an easement. And I guess that's the football that we trust to you.
Okay, so what we would need is, I mean, I can generate the easement document. We need a description of the easement, physically, the bounds of the easement.
Okay.
That would be something that an engineer, I mean, we have an engineer working on. This anyway, don't wait.
Uh, not for the sewer project.
Okay, well, we should.
Clarify that, what did you, did you jump to the, um, the, the footprint that you're asking?
You have to describe it, Jim.
What we're gonna be putting in and how much.
Well, you gotta, you gotta describe the, the, the physical bounds of the, I mean.
Right.
If, if, I mean, you know, I can draw something real broad and crazy, but if they show it to an attorney or representative, then they're gonna say, you can't sign this. You know, you wanna, you wanna limit these extent to which you're gonna impose a burden on the property.
I was trying to.
Do we have a copy of the old easement?
I don't. Probably somewhere, I would imagine I couldn't.
The existing, we can't put it in the existing footprint of what we already have.
Apparently not, because it's going to require an LP tank.
Okay.
Um. That being said.
Yes, okay. If, if you can dig out from the existing one, maybe we can see how it got described in there and who did it, maybe we can get some help with that. Yeah, I think Craig was looking at the footprint.
Yeah, he gave me, he gave me information regarding the footprint that I could report to Ken, but I don't think that's gonna help for the description of what we're.
Yeah, I mean, it's not always gotta look at it, like, I could, you know.
So that law is in motion. Any other comments or discussions with Ken regarding that? Back, Kevin? Yes, okay. Uh, Tustin, you with the motion to accept the agreement as presented in four point three for the five thousand dollars that was stated in the report?
You need a motion to exact money? I'll move that.
I have a motion and a second further discussion. All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Four point four, a consent order for assessment reduction proceedings referenced to the Delaware River Solar um, New York Tustin one. And this is what was drawn up by Ken in the assessor's office regarding payments on that.
Yeah, so this, this, this is about, you know, the solar assessment of the solar improvements on these two parts. Um, these are for two back years, not current years, twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. What happened was the state, in its infinite wisdom, decided that they were going to dictate how you value solar installations, and it's all state-made policy determination that they want to encourage the, the alternate energy and, and, and solar energy production, so um, they have a formula now, a model that actually, that actually you plug the information and it tells you what you're supposed to value that stat. And um, the numbers were not right based on that model for those two years that are in question. And the consent order has the numbers that conform with what the model would require. So it's pretty much, you know.
Will you owe them money?
I'm sure, yeah, there'll probably be some tax refund on it.
Um. Like, also Peg, where that it actually wasn't.
Okay.
That's a possibility.
That could be, you know, because there's an exemption in there too, so depending on how the exemption matches the, what the value is, it, it may be.
And she's at a meeting now, otherwise I'd have her.
Because this, this actually started with Ken and he, and, and, and he was comfortable with it, and he had set up, and I'm sure she's continuing on with the with, with putting the correct numbers in year to year, because they changed the model.
Yeah, she said, and that's what you had mentioned, was that there's no.
The assessor's office started this first thing?
No, 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 this is started by the taxpayer.
No, that's the like.
And, and, you know, we were taking it over it and.
Four point four consent order.
Um, actually, just to, Jake, I think I've leaked on one of those years, maybe both of them. The, the, the amounts that were requested were actually reduced to reduce them to a lower amount. And um, or, or, or maybe that the, the model would have, would have, would have justified, well, actually, I got that reversed. The model would have justified a lower amount, but they didn't ask for a low enough amount because the model wasn't out yet when they did.
Oh.
So they kind of, we, we, it could be worse. That's what I'm saying. But going forward, you know, they, the, the model is there, the assessor's office has the information, and it, it shouldn't be a problem, no one calls. And this is not unique here. At the same thing in Delaware, um, with it, with, with the solar sites there, I think we had the same. Not Rockville, but there was, there was another one.
The one they just didn't have the model on.
Yeah, right. In fact, there was, there was a period of time where it was in complete limbo and nobody knew what the heck was going on until the state finally put their foot down on it.
Any questions from the board?
Who are essentially approving an agreement that conforms to this newly established date guideline?
Pretty much, yeah.
So you need a motion?
A motion to approve four point four, the consent order as presented.
I'll move that.
You second? I will second. All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Four point five, a street closure, motion to authorize the Tustin Youth Commission and the Narisburg Chamber to close Main Street from the interstate bridge intersection to the post office on Saturday, December seventh from three to eight PM for the town tree lighting and holiday magic on Main Street. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Oppose. Other new business. It's not on the agenda. You're good. I will open the floor for public comment. I will start on Zoom and then I will move into the audience.
I don't seem to have any marks on.
On the floor? Star?
This is working. Hello? I'm submitting as correspondence my usual list of unaddressed town problems, as can be found in my public comments, appended to the October eighth meeting minutes. Please note that most of these issues have remained unresolved for more than a year, with no indication of any future repair date. Tonight, I will address one issue specifically. We made the town announcement in the last issue of the River Reporter that construction for a pavilion in the Tustin multi-generational park is underway as of October twenty-first. This awkwardly worded announcement comes uncomfortably close to the textbook definition of kutsa. As the pavilion idea was initially suggested to restore cading in the park after the town unilaterally cut down all the trees that it previously provided stayed there. Despite objections from many residents citing the destruction of quality of life in the neighborhood and their repeated calls for cost estimates of the project to be rendered before any plans or building of the building will be pursued, work was summarily begun, starting with digging up the park green and the creation of a concrete platform. There was no cost estimate of the ADA restroom facilities that would be required if the pavilion was to be used as an enclosed meeting area for people. Only one board member exercised fiscal responsibility by voting against continuing the pavilion project until a cost estimate of the project was obtained. While some board members could have flouted the will of the residents most affected by this project, not to mention the other town taxpayers, who will inevitably end up footing the bill for this project in the mystery. Coupled with this expenditure, coupled this expenditure with other huge costs looming in the town's replacement of the water and sewer infrastructure, the repair and or replacement of two town water wells, the repairs and replacement of inoperative, inoperative town streetlights, repairs to the flooring of the town deck, and to the ADA doors in town hall. Both are lawful, waiting to happen. All these needs need to take funding priority before the pavilion. I hope the board will heed this message and take steps to prioritize funding of projects accordingly. Thank you.
Yes, Mike.
Well, I'm going back for a moment to the consent order. What is the range of liability that the town might potentially face based on formulas and how they play out? Are we talking about a little bit of money or a whole lot of money?
Michael, it depends on your point of view. You know, I, I mean. Perspectively, it's not gonna matter, because we're not, we're gonna, they're gonna set the value every year based on the formula.
Right.
And that's what our tax revenue will be. So it's, it really, the, the, the limitation was the risk of these couple of years that were in play and, and the potential for there to be a refund.
That's basically my question.
But we're not gonna, going forward, there won't be a refund, because the, the numbers will be done in accordance with whatever the model is, so there'll be nothing to challenge.
Right, but the question is, what is the refund potential?
I don't, I don't know.
Right now, my conversation with Peg just forty minutes ago was that it, there is no cost to the town on this because of the way Ken plugged the original numbers in. Even though they didn't know what it was going to be, how he did it, turns out that there's no cost to the town.
So it's, we don't have to write the check.
That's my understanding.
Delaware call.
We're not going to be writing a check.
To them, and then going forward, there'll be clarity as to what the assessment is.
Yeah, going, going forward, you're essentially established year to year based upon whatever the current model is, that, that the state is handing down for that year.
Okay, well, that was basically the question, what were, what was hanging out there in terms of town liability? Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a question and then a question, comment. Old Business three dot three, well number three, the agreement. Kevin, did you say that, that's somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty grand? I want one I did, actually, and, and I was given that number. Okay. But it's really much higher than that if we were to replace that. Thirty grand was something that Dave mentioned based on literally the, the construction of a, of a well. I think what I. And so much of the other is, is to do with conforming to all kinds of state stuff. That wasn't in that original estimate, and I apologize for passing. No, 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 that's, that's, I should ask the question differently. Um, I, I didn't mean that. I know you, you actually did clarify at the last meeting. Yeah.
Yeah.
We thought it was somewhere in the neighborhood of this, but it turned out to be one seventy with maybe, with maybe a some kind of boost from someone for twenty-five grand, whatever. What I'm really asking here is, this, this agreement is, is this for not for people digging wells and replacing wells, it's for their, their expertise and their, uh.
This is, uh, a, an agreement with an engineering firm to get us not only engineering reports for the well itself, but also whatever reports we would need, either with the insurance company, which we've already got some for, or if we go for funding, um, such as USDA and the reports that the Department of Health is gonna require as part of their permitting process.
Make two different things, this, this agreement and the actual replacement of the well?
Yeah, yeah, right.
This is like.
Alright.
This is like paying a lawyer.
Ah, okay.
Of, of the model.
You get the sense, you're paying for their, for their advice and, and for their.
And that figure is thirty-ish?
Uh, right now, the budget under the agreement that we just passed was for thirty.
Okay.
If it requires more, then there would have to be an amendment brought back to the board.
Ballpark is fine, so that, that's what we're talking about, but we're still talking about hundred seventy minus a
Right.
Some boost that somebody else is gonna get.
That's why there's, there's a lot of variables in the air, one is whether or not we get insurance and how much. The other is the need based on, if well two comes back online, we have two wells. We were, we were working with well three as the backup to well one.
Correct.
Now we may have well two, looks, but I don't want to promise anything. We have well two, it just gives us a lot more freedom to make this decision.
To take time to, to make the decision based on well number two coming in.
Alright.
That, and well two is, as I said, is the mechanical parts of well two uh, returned to service have been answered, it's all a matter of testing now. And some concerns that this is a old well that hasn't been used in how many years.
Speaking about well two.
Two, yeah.
Okay, going back to well three. The replacement is gonna cost a few dollars and that's, um, uh, will, will be the, the way it stays, as I said, you're working on, uh, possible grants or something else to help out with covering the quarter for that thing.
And, and just to address something that Star mentioned. Uh, the replacement of these wells is not a town, it's a special district. Nobody living in lava is gonna be, who, who has to pay for their own wells? As, is, is going to be.
I've seen the map and I've seen the lines.
It's only in the special district.
Not, not.
It's maybe even area, because there's fewer people.
Yeah. Okay, so staying with that and with the, the water stuff. That thing was mailed out and, and I got mine today, the, um, the survey, um, and I think it's, if, you know, the, the way that it was worded that, uh, you know, you need a certain amount of people, a high percentage of people to answer this in order for the, the, uh, survey to be valid and for, in order for it to help, but great, I looked at this and went through it and people had, uh, R cap, is that the, that's the way that they say that? Uh. Will be the only folks looking at this and you, in your letters said, you know, they, they sound intrusive, but we try not to make it intrusive. So I'm looking at this and I think according to the way this is worded, this should have been a two pager instead of a two sider. Because the, the, uh, and the way that it, oh, seriously, if you look at it, so not only do I tell you that I only make thirteen dollars and fifty cents a year on this side, and then you know who it is and where I live. So I'm either laughing stock or then tense intrusiveness, right? But this either has to come from the town as a two, as a two pager so that they get taken apart and shuffled, this is what it said right here. Or, yeah, but, uh, R cap solution separates the first page with content, contained income information from the second page. This, this side, uh, with your signatures, and they take them apart and shuffle them and they go off somewhere and, okay. Not like this, you know, that thirteen dollars and fifty cents that I made this year, it's, it's me on Delaware Drive. No, come on. The only reason I say that is because I could have went like this, threw it in the garbage, and what am I doing? It's ruining me and you. And I don't wanna do that, so. Oh boy, so you guys either needed to make the copies or I need to make the copies, or if R cap's actually doing this on the arm uh, or at a, a reduced price, are they gonna make, take it apart and make copies? Somebody had to. So just, just so you know, in case you, you know, your interest in this is not as big as we ought to have, that's just like a little simple thing that I think.
That's, I'll, I'll take responsibility for that, some of it was literally about how many pages we put in. There's an envelope, there's an envelope, there's a, and I, I will take responsibility for lightning that.
I mean, I already, I already finished mine, I took it apart and made two pages.
And you can do it. You can do it online too.
Yeah.
With the URL there and the.
Paying for the stamp, the line's already on the road, but, but it's, there's two pages in the envelope. I separated them, so just so you know.
Thank you, well, thanks, thanks for the feedback, because that was an overtime.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments?
Board comment? I just wanted to touch on something, Tony sent us a note this morning about, uh, the drought situation in, in the whole state and, oh, country, right? And whether or not we should make some sort of, uh, motion to, uh, you know, restrict open fires and burning, and we, are we the body that does it?
And the end answer is, New York City did that yesterday.
Yeah.
And I explained that to Tony, that they put on a statewide ban. I don't know if it's within a preview of a town.
Started to look and then I got sidetracked because I did see Tony's email from the board.
Up, but, but the best thing would be the state do it.
And they have it.
They do the annual burn ban anywhere, you know.
And they've got one in now until at least November thirty. I mean, I think it's good that we talk about it here, let people know that our concern, but I, it's not our.
Is prevent state ban in regions, because, uh, I know Mid Hudson and Catskill is in drought. But there's areas of the Adirondacks, which is not, I mean, I got this data from Sullivan County. It's, it's online right now, so I just wanted to know, is that a statewide?
I don't know, I, I haven't read the, the, I imagine they're trying to.
Uh, any other board comments? Meeting reminders?
Um. We do need to set the water reliefs, so we do.
Do you need a recess for water and sewer levers?
Um, the nineteenth or?
The nineteenth is a Tuesday, it's one week from today. Um, and that could be at any time.
Yeah.
Or the twentieth, which is a Wednesday. Um. Bruce is to attend, it'll have to be four thirty or later.
And then gone on Tuesday, so.
Wednesday be better?
Is this a, a water and sewer meeting or?
It's just the, do the re-levees for the water and sewer for those that have not been, um, paid so that they could be sent to the county.
Okay, so. It's, it's a short meeting for you, you know. Oh.
We just need a.
So Tuesday is better for you.
It's just a quick thing, right, I'm happy you do it.
Either day, finally.
So Tuesday better for me, but I can do Wednesday if necessary?
Tuesday, Wednesday.
You can't do.
I can't do Tuesday, but I can do Wednesday.
But we should have a.
I, I can do Wednesday, so, you know, if it's a short meeting, I'll just bring Rosie.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Um, four thirty?
Five o'clock? Yeah.
That would be, then I'm just, okay. Yeah. Five o'clock?
Five, five is good.
Alright. I wouldn't want you to miss out on the. I'm only thinking about you.
Thank you.
I know, I try. Okay, if there is no other board comment, I would make a motion to recess this meeting to the twentieth of November at five o'clock P M. The same location.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor? I oppose. Thank you.